And then, you know, your, your creature of habit to a degree.
Yeah.
Sorry, you can't use the same password.
Right.
Using the last four years.
No, it's not possible, not possible.
It's me? Grabbing random serial numbers from around the office to throw out there.
I don't want to know, Phil, I don't want to know.
Oh, yeah.
That neighbor down there by you sure done a lot of work on their house.
Oh, a nice looking house.
The one on the very corner, that white?
Well, kind of the road kind of turns right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just. Like white brick one thing.
Uh huh.
I keep telling him, we need to finish these projects. Anyway, that's another story. That's not, that was not your point, was it? Yes, yes, he did. But the people that were living there just moved out because I guess they kept telling them. He's got a black table or something. They're bad.
They don't want that.
That's like we know one, but um. And it's getting pretty ugly between the two of them. So he was just kind of like. So.
Neighborhood.
Yeah, so they started that. And then the neighbor on the other side, the gentleman who's been at that.
I hope not.
No, no, it's like his first questions to ask about Stafford.
I'm just looking to see what I have. They're not interesting questions.
Oh, yeah, I've got a couple here to show my. My intention to peruse through and read.
I'm thinking safety kicker, what if I exit all?
He's a Hispanic guy.
Do. Power, the power of observation and the attention to detail is quite, quite strong in me. Oh. Yeah.
He's a, he's a nice guy though.
Okay.
He'll, he'll respond to cookies.
Making it.
Overpriced and undersold, I think was its downfall. That was a lot of money, just what the people were getting. I think they needed a way stronger visual story to tell for what, I mean, that was as big as all the other bonds they've done, put together. And to just, you know, they wrote down some, some thoughts and things that they're wanting to do that were worthwhile, but I won't, you know, I think they needed to show very specifically what they were building. I don't think they ever got to the design phase. That kind of money, they want to see it.
Yeah.
Sent to college today, Utah, so she won't be here. And.
Do you want me to sign?
Mike is supposed to be joining us online. Look, he's online. Okay.
Do you want me to sign bills or somebody else?
If you would, that would be great, please.
As long as I.
About that for a vote. There you go, I assume. I'll have to ask for it.
Big stack.
No, but how many signatures?
Million dollar kind of a facility supplemental thing.
Is this, it's above ten, thirty? Oh, that's a lot of money. Yeah, I didn't remember the exact envelope. Second, I think that from the time they gave the presentation to us, to the time where it was time to vote, it was like a very short.
I was surprised, I don't know what the rules are, if it's a rule thing or if it's a strategy thing, why it was on the primary as opposed to the general election ballot.
That's good, yeah. Going to come through like, or ask for that much money, like you said, spend more time, like you said.
Yeah, yeah.
I assume there's either a rule around that or there's, they got um. When the hospitals started communicating. Maybe at least my observations. In the comments, right?
Lot of money.
I can help, maybe.
Well, then I realize. Are you there? That says you're at the highway. So we have a guy who's from Spokane.
They've done so much without the pond, it's been impressive. I don't know if you've been there to look at the new ER and stuff like that. Nice to see.
It's been, yeah, I have been up there, it's been.
Oh.
At least.
Meeting will come to order. I'll let the record show that Sarah's not here tonight. Need a motion to excuse.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mike? Okay, to note that Mike is on, is online and also Anna is also online. Please join me in the main pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to note, we are recording and we are live on YouTube. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Take that as a no. We have nobody here for public comment. We have a presentation of National Day of Remembrance and Service.
Sorry.
By?
You have a proclamation.
A proclamation?
Yeah.
I don't have a copy of it.
For what else?
Could be tougher to read then, isn't it?
Not really, but it might be a little different. Thank you. All right, to proclamation of declaring September eleventh the day of remembrance. Whereas the unprovoked attack on September eleventh upon America by foreign terrorists thrust the United States and other countries into a war it never envisioned, military or diplomatically. And whereas the America's emergency service personnel and armed forces are fully committed to ensure our freedom remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations now and forever. And whereas the challenges of facing all the civilized people of the world as they relate to the war on terrorism will not end until the eradication of inhuman acts perpetuated around the globe. And whereas one way to accomplish this is to never forget the innocent victims and those who sacrifice our freedoms. And whereas Americans can fight back ensuring that those people did not die in vain by reminding the world the deaths of these people will always be remembered and they will be forever loved. And whereas a noble and appropriate way to accomplish this is through the celebration of their living. And whereas September eleventh, formerly known as Patriots' Day, the nine eleven National Day of Service has been designated by Congress as a national day of service and remembrance to play, pay tribute to the victims of nine eleven through the charitable services and good deeds. Whereas each one of us can now show our strength as Americans entitled and honored the victims of nine eleven as well of, as well as those who've given their lives protecting our freedom by engaging in meaningful acts to others. And whereas this commemoration should be held throughout the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the demonstration of America's resolve and perseverance to win the war on terrorism, the advancement of reasonable citizens, responsible citizenship, and encourage the patriotism and love of country. Now therefore be it resolved, we are issuing this proclamation to memorize those innocent men, women, and children whose lives were suddenly without cause and pointlessly taken from them. And be it further resolved, this proclamation be publicized for all to see and know the citizens of Efrida Washington will remember with eternal respect those who sacrificed and have sacrificed so we may enjoy the freedoms of this great nation. And be it further resolved, we do our utmost to step up and engage in community service, not just on nine eleven, but always. And be it further resolved, we will never take our freedom for granted. Respectfully submitted and approved on this twentieth day of August twenty five. For shrine, citizen mayor of Efrida. Thank you, everybody. With that in mind, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thanks, Matt.
So kept.
Thanks, Val. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. Opposed? So moved. Committee and agency reports, got a couple of them we want to tap into tonight. A couple of big things are going on, so we'll start with parks and recreation.
Yeah, so Mayor Council, what you guys are looking at up there is we're moving forward with the pickleball and um, footsall and basketball project that we had originally planned. It was part of the comp plan back in twenty twenty three. We put in for a grant last year with RCO. Unfortunately, we didn't get that grant. So we found that out just about a month ago. So moving forward, we have three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds to utilize. That's what we're going to utilize those funds for this year. What you're currently looking at right there is just the hardscape and the concrete work and also the paving for like the parking lot right there. And then next year, we'll tap into um, the Paul Lozier money that we got for another grant for four hundred thousand. Take some of that money, phase the project out. But I think we're just, we're pretty close, have a couple of little things we have to just change, and then we're hoping to get this out to bid by next month and potentially get this work done this fall. So, and keeping it right at that three hundred thousand is our number from ARPA, so. Great, sorry. Yeah.
All right. The phase next year is the cover over it, right? Or is it something else?
So. Probably not the cover. The next phase would then be to put some sort of like sport court material, material on it, the fencing around the perimeter, um, the lines down, any other amenities we want to add to the facility.
Because I know way back when the original thought was to put a cover over it at some point.
Yeah, that was kind of a wish list type thing if we got funds from RCO.
We'll get there eventually.
We'll continue to apply for the RCO money. We scored fairly well.
Yeah, we just missed.
Scored quite well enough. So we'll refine that, work with the grant manager, try to sharpen up that, that grant proposal and hopefully score a little bit better, a little bit higher rankings.
Yeah, it's exciting. Getting close to getting out to bid, so.
Nice. Thanks, Josh. Any other questions?
No, it looked like splash zone numbers were pretty good this year. Were you pleased?
Yeah, I think we went, last year we had two hundred nineteen family passes, this year two hundred thirty eight. And the five year average, I think, was at like hundred and sixty five or something, yeah, hundred and sixty five. So, yeah.
I know, early on, maybe early spring, late winter, we talked about kind of that early bird. Do you think that helped drive some of the family passes?
Yeah, I think it, it always helps. We usually always run the early bird throughout the whole, or until April thirtieth, so. But yeah, I think it definitely did help.
Then the Lions Park playground equipment, is that still theoretical, debatable stuff, or is that?
Yeah, we have pictures of that too. So that's everything I was going to go over. So last couple of months, um, been working with multiple playground companies, getting conceptuals done, getting site visits, talking with them. We budgeted for this year for seventy thousand playground improvements. So a lot of the things you're seeing, few of them are over budget because my plan was to pull about forty thousand from impact fees with a total budget of like a hundred and ten thousand. The first ranked conceptual that was ranked by Parks Commission by uh, Great Western Recreation. They actually have matching funds available right now, so they're able to do a lot more than the other playground companies. And that's actually the same company that was used when they put in the grant for the Columbia Ridge Playground. When they put that in twenty fifteen or that was, so. Yeah, essentially right now, we're, we want to order all, we want to order, you know, whichever one we're going to pick. And hopefully have it in the fall, get it installed. Just trying to bite down at the numbers to try and get it within budget and they're pretty, they can customize a lot of stuff, so they can pull out, you know, more expensive play systems or functions of this theme and plug it in with different things and it can pretty much the same, so. We have the whole idea with Lions Park. Right now, if you guys just picture Lions Park, we have pretty decently old play structure, kind of geared more towards, I would say, two to five year olds. So the idea around what we want to put down there is a big five to twelve year old structure, which is kind of the one you're seeing in the back there with tons of different features, takes up a pretty big footprint. And then also features that um, cater to like the six month, twenty three month old kiddos that have nothing to do in our parks right now when they go to the park. So when you get that mom that has five year old and also a one year old, they could both do something rather than her just kind of chase the one year old around on um, down a big slide or something they shouldn't be doing, so. But yeah.
Very cool. That's thoughtful.
Is any of it going to be like wheelchair accessible for kids?
Yeah, all the, every single play system you see here, um, they either have some version of like an ADA step ramp where it's like a transfer station, you could put somebody or some sort of a bridge that you could go up.
Okay.
Yeah, access it, so.
All right, very cool.
Yeah.
That it? A lot? Thanks, Josh. Uh, any of the other staff or people would like to discuss anything that we're getting into, just looking at our agency reports that you want to bring up?
I just want to look at this, the project with the um, pickleball courts, that's just going to get a concrete pad. Be the actual fencing for in, for the footsall court or even striping, and we had a concrete pad in. Hoping we can get the asphalt done, but that probably happened in the springtime because I think the three hundred thousand won't cover that. We'll bid it out, plan that the concrete goes in and this year, and the asphalt will go in in spring of next year. As far as the netting for the actual courts and separate the courts, all the interior stuff will come with additional phase and funding.
Yeah, more likely it's not going to be like playable this fall, but it will be there, ready to be for phase two and get that going, so. Hopefully as soon as we can in twenty twenty six, so.
With a multimillion dollar project like this, just parks don't have, we don't have enough money. So having to spread it out over multiple years, unless we would have gotten the RCO grant, in which case we still would have had to do it over a couple of years. But this is just the way we're able to still complete a project and still make steps without have public see process and our progress without just saying, we're saving money, saving money for a park. Like, we can make steps, we can spend the money and actually start doing something.
Remind me where we stand with the, the pickleball court up by Columbia Ridge, that technically isn't ours, right?
Correct. That, the lot is owned by the school district. We just kind of maintain it.
Okay.
Put those, those pickleball courts one right now, but up there.
I wasn't sure if they had any envision for keeping that going or if they were.
Yeah, I think we've, we're still trying to figure out what we want to put there, or if we want to keep the pickleball courts there, or if the school district wants to do something different there. I think that those conversations are happening. Just get it about the right table and.
Before I take any pickleball courts away, I wanted to make sure we didn't get somewhere else for them to play, so.
Anybody else? All right, great. Anybody else? Good, we're going to talk about you later, right? Okay. Thanks, Josh. Moving on to the ordinances on the uh, first reading of ordinance twenty five oh six, the comp plan amendment.
This is a, a site specific, this ordinance uh, is relating to a site specific comp plan designation and result. Uh, but technically not really a result. It is uh, an overlay over top of. Property that, that we're looking at is uh, between fourth and fifth Avenue Southwest, um, and between Alder Street and the alley between Alder Street and Basin, um, just between what used to be Barry's and North furniture. But it's a two, it's two parcels, one point one acres, um, existing on that property currently, there is uh, three dwellings and approximately a ten plus uh, unit mobile home park. It's been there um, probably seventy plus years as a, as the mobile home park, so. There's a lot of it that's, that's existing non-conforming. Um, the south parcel has a concrete block building that is two stories. That was modified, it originally was commercial, it was modified to um, residential use probably thirty plus years ago. And then at some point, um, it was, there was some remodeling without permits. It lost its non-conforming stance. And that, then the property has since sold. Um, the new property owner just wanted to back in and put apartments back in there. When, when they lost their non-conforming status, um, the underlying zoning no longer allowed the apartments to be a court zone. Without either rezoning it to a residential use or uh, the overall uh, mixed use transition overlay. We worked with the, the property owners, they originally came in and wanted to do a, a rezone to residential. But when they heard that, you know, when they realized that we could not support rezone, you know, surrounded by the commercial and industrial uses um, and zonings there, we talked them into that, that overlay. Um, what that overlay will allow would be that they can go back in with the commercial. That lower floor will have to ma, be maintained as commercial, but the upper stories could be um, residential apartments. We did go through the, you know, the planning commission did have a public hearing on this um, in June twenty six. They did recommend approval as submitted. There were no concerns from agencies that we did uh, or send out to. There was absolutely no public comment throughout the entire process. So this would be the first reading of um, of the ordinance to, to follow the, the planning commission's recommendation.
I think it's great. I think this is what we were kind of going for with the new comp plan to try and give maximum flexibility in these kind of in-between areas, particularly in the downtown district, so. Anybody that's looking to update or modify or invest in their property in any way, shape or form, I'm, I want to make sure we're not the ones getting in the way. So I think it's a good move.
Yeah, this is definitely a, a, a good, good compromise uh, for that area.
Any other questions? So the process on this, this is the first reading. Are you prepared to move it on or do you want to deal with it?
Um, at, at this point, you know, that, that is the standard, because it is a, an ordinance. I don't see it needing to go uh, until next, next hearing.
So you want to sidestep the second reading and get it passed tonight?
I think so, the opposite. If you're willing to, I would support that. However, um, I did not expect that to be the case.
Okay, now let's hold off. Okay. Any other questions? Can we move on? Resolution twenty five fifty eight approving the amendment to sublease the Efrida Sportsman's Association.
Council Mayor, thank you. Um, as you're aware, we've for years had a, an agreement with the Port of Efrida, which we've listened to and then some license the Efrida Sportsman's Association to operate and generate jack there uh, at the port area. Multiple local law enforcement jurisdictions utilize the facility for free as a result of that. It's been a benefit to the community and the Efrida Sportsman's Association hosts events that bring in people to our town. Uh, and then invested a lot of time, uh, money into that facility as well. So this is just an extension of that lease. It aligns it with our lease. With the Port of Efrida for that property, between now and then, we'll then have to enter into some negotiations with the port uh, to extend that lease further, so. It's just an extension of that lease as an amendment.
Okay. Questions?
No, I'm really excited that we were able to get everyone on the same page, get that, got pushed through. I think everyone really likes having that facility. It's a first class facility out there. Didn't want to have any kind of hiccups.
It is impressive, impressive facility.
With any other questions, we need a motion to accept resolution twenty five fifty eight approving the amendment to sublease the Efrida Sportsman's Association. I'll move.
Second. Second.
We got four, probably about out of seven. Okay. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Mike. Resolution twenty five fifty nine authorizing the DOE Stormwater Grant Application.
Mayor Council, what we have for you is a request to uh, give the mayor permission to sign a grant application to the DOE for Stormwater Management Plan. It has a fifteen percent match. Um, this will allow us to get a comprehensive stormwater plan established, which will include a flood hazard mitigation plan, which we've never really had, so. Um, it'll be a good step towards moving forward and um, allowing us to identify proj, projects and problems and, and go for other funding to try to address our downtown flood zones, so. If you have any questions, I can.
Is there a dollar amount attached to this?
Yes, the grant or the full project hundred twenty five thousand dollars, so our match is eighteen thousand seven fifty.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Is, is this uh, going to assist us in getting uh, away from being designated a flood zoned in downtown area?
Well, it'll allow us to start that process. Um, there you're dealing with FEMA and we'll, we'll have to have a case. We'll need to address some things, I think, downtown. Um, and we, yeah, need to first of all, make it a better situation where we're not susceptible to flooding and then uh, present that case to FEMA and hopefully work towards. I've never talked with FEMA and not sure what, if it'll be hitting a, a s, s, brick wall, but I think the first thing is to make sure that we address that we don't have flooding and then from there, try to work through the uh, the guidelines that they set up with us to. The ultimate goal is yes, to address the, the FEMA designation.
Thank you.
Sounds like this is just a foundational piece to get our ducks in a row before we take it up to the next low.
Yes, it's, we, it's the first building blocks that have never really been tackled, so.
I really applaud you for that, Sean. We've proven to have to be proactive on this. Every effort I've ever made to cut in contact with FEMA, it's, it's a ghost town. You don't hear anybody back, nobody, they don't know that they actually do any real communication. They just have a.
Yeah, and.
Thing, so.
We also have a rating system that does reduce our insurance rates a little bit. Then this will, um, having a plan helps us towards accumulating points there to hopefully uh, improve our rating, which Ron has more knowledge or experience dealing with that uh, program, but um, only good things will happen like this.
Awesome. Thank you.
It's just so nice to be able to take that next step because we've been dealing with this for decades to try to deal with this. So, yeah, it's a good step. Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Dave. Need a motion to accept resolution twenty five fifty nine, the DOE Stormwater Grant Application.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Got about nine so moves, a couple dozen seconds. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mike. So move. Resolution twenty five sixty, the comp plan amendment capital facilities update.
So this is, is an update to our comp plan, um, is uh, to the capital ceilings element that comp plan. We currently do have.
It is to the capital ceilings element that we currently do have here. But we do routinely each year need to update that remove a year out of year. So this this year we are we are taking what we already have, moving some stuff around. Adding all the information that's on the stack wall. Took into account water facilities plan and a sewer plan. So it is updated with those. Those new items. This is something that does that we are required to include if we're going to be using any of the refunds, the real. Real estate excise tax monies, we do have to have that pointed our listed in that. In that comp our capital facilities plan so that we can use it that that is stated added for that. Notice was provided per city code. It was posted on on the website and it's set out. Again, no, no issues from agencies, no public comment. Planning Commission did review at a public hearing on June twenty sixth on this and recommended approval. The sixty day state review was completed, no issues, actually no comments from them. So we do recommend approval and because it is a resolution, we can we can pass it through tonight.
Good. Questions? Yabbits? Nice, Ron. Thank you. Need a motion to accept resolution twenty five sixty, the comp plan amendment capital facilities update. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
And thank you. Just one each, huh?
We didn't fight over that one.
It's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. Opposed? So moved. Thank you, everybody. That was pretty good chunk of stuff that just went through there. Items for council consideration, the reservoir logo installation. Here we go.
Oh, Mayor Council, what you have before you is we've had the discussion with the logo being placed on the reservoir. The way this was bid out is there was just a placeholder with no real specifications, a twenty thousand dollar placeholder plus sales tax on top of that. But once we had a logo and presented that to the contractor and they worked with their subcontractor, we were finally. Gotten received numbers on what it would cost to put up either one logo or two logos. And so I've presented those numbers and. And what the increased cost of. Bid prices would be. So just looking for direction on whether you want two, one, or if. Down logos and just want a big white tank.
So can you let us know the approximate cost of what we're looking at here?
Okay, it's it's in the RCA, but for one logo, it'd be after sales tax. Twenty eight thousand one hundred fifty seven dollars forty four cents, which is a six thousand four hundred seventy seven dollar and forty four cent increase over the. What was included in the bid. If you want two logos, it's forty three thousand one seventy seven and eighty nine cents, which is about twenty one thousand. Four hundred ninety eight dollar increase. Deal with that through a change order in the project.
And this is just for consideration right now, right?
Well, we're hoping for correction functions so that we can actually get to this.
So what specifically per word is your request?
Well, I there's several motion options. One is. Motion to approve no logos. I'm not giving you any direction. This is your guys' decision on how much you want to spend. It is. Citizen money, taxpayer money and and I guess actually two fees, but. If you think it's a. Good use of the money, then. You can go two, one, or leave it for a later date.
Okay, counsel?
My feeling is is there should be something up there. My quandary is. Does there need to be one on each side? If you just go with one, where does it go? And for the neighbors up there, what do they look at on one side? Is it a? Blank canvas or do you face? Airport road so people coming into the area can see it. So.
So we go with one logo. We will place it at the it'll be basically pointing towards the intersection of D Street and. Division that you come up over the hill. There's trees. It'll fit in there. So you'll be able to see it from that location, but also from across town. If you go with the second logo, that would probably be on approximately the opposite side of the tank. But even towards and the straight section of Highway seventeen as you come to town, that's where you'll probably be able to see it. You know, the first time you'll be able to see it from a distance. So it'll be facing the airport and a little bit to the north or south of the airport. They'll be approximately opposite sides from each other, but. As far as people can tell, they'll be on opposite sides and they'll be able to see both at the same time.
Just as a footnote. Paid attention and not that. What the other communities in the area do is necessarily what we need to do, but I was noticing on the the tanks over in Moses Lake, they only ever brand one side. There are no, there are no two logos, at least on the ones I noticed this last week.
So if you go to the Moses Lakes went through several revisions of what they've done. The first tanks that we put, it was. Logo on one side, but three stripes went all the way around. So it gave you some coloring on the backside. After they will start going to more of the other. Two or three options they want, but yes, just one location.
Right. Okay. So we don't. My point being here is that. I'd like to see some branding on there. I'd like to see the interaction that we've already agreed upon as far as supporting the schools locally. But I'm not so sure. We just need only need to have one side. I don't know that two is necessary.
Anytime I get into budgets for government capital projects, I'm obviously horrified at the scale we get into. It reminds me of like budgeting for a wedding. And particularly when you get to the end of a thirteen million dollar project, it's, you know, it's always one more thing. At the same time, I can't. Say we shouldn't frost the wedding cake at this point. I said it's another another item on there, but. Given its location and the skyline, I can't see not doing both sides. You want, I assume we at least want one facing the town. But it's pretty prevalent coming in for those long drives coming across from from Moses Lake. Not that we're trying to show off to our neighbors, but. I think that it's prevalent enough from that side. It justifies both. Be my vote.
I I agree with Matt.
Coming in two votes for two.
As much as the cost gives me a lot of heartburn for the second one, I think I think you almost have to go with two. Especially since we don't like the Moses Lake one where they have the color stripes around. At least you have some color to it. But just to have that huge white tank with absolutely nothing on the on the one side, I think I think we need to go with two.
Okay. Bull, you said a lot, but I'm not sure what you're. Well, one or two. Or none.
No, I'm I'm in I'm indifferent. The I mean, obviously, I mean, the price. Is is something that I look at and being a good good steward of taxpayer money, but also there's some good argument for. I guess beautification for the people that live in that area to have something on both sides and. Recognizing our city and being prideful of people that travel through the area have something to look at too. Yeah, two is fine.
God, finally got to it.
Yeah.
I'll keep it simple. I vote two.
Pretty simple. Alright, so with that in mind, we need a motion to authorize the two sided logo for the water tower. For the two logos, one on each side.
So moved.
Thank you. Any other questions? Took less time than the logo, didn't it, Katie? So motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mike. So moved. You okay, Sean? Right?
Some direction.
Ready to rock. Alright. Administration reports, council goal setting dates.
Thank you for answering the doodle poll. Apologize me to do it twice. Technical difficulty on my end with the first one. We settled on September eighth, five o'clock to eight P M. We listed September eleventh also five to eight. However, there's typically a ceremony at the courthouse from about five to six. So we'll push that one back to six ish based on our. Completion of the September eleventh ceremony. September sixteen, five to eight, and then again, September eighteen, five to eight. If you guys can all go ahead and mark that calendars. I think you got some calendar invites already.
Six o'clock will be a tight fit for the nine eleven ceremony. Some of us may be late.
Schedule around. Badged people.
Well, just to make sure that I understand what we're doing, we're planning on meeting on each one of those four dates for. That time except on the eleventh, which could be tweaked because of the nine eleven ceremony. Okay.
There you go. All the public safety people can surely fill in for. Stop's time at the nine eleven ceremony. We'll just be a little late.
Yeah.
Think we can work around it.
The SWAT analysis that we're doing in conjunction with the court commissioners. And I checked right before the meeting starts, five of you have commented. So two of you were slacking. I don't know who you are.
Good mind.
Same on there. It's anonymous.
I can ask you what color.
You went.
I can ask you what color because I'm the one that had the issue with the doodle. So.
Okay.
I'll talk to you.
Actually, I have it over right here. I have a light, I have a blue, a yellow, a purple, a green and a pink. So if you're not one of those colors, we we need you to please. Log in there. If you need some help, give me a jingle and we'll walk you through it. And last but not least. We have a. Make sure everybody's aware of. Given the detour route that we're all currently experiencing coming from Moses Lake. It takes a lot of traffic currently right down Nat Washington Way and a where it intersects with A Street right by the railroad tracks. During the school hours, that intersection is already congested, to say the least. So we're going to work with the county and the school district. And do things during those school hours, pick up and drop off times. And actually push traffic all the way to Division. We'll have a flagger there by Columbia Ridge in case kids are crossing Division. We'll have flaggers where all the blue dots are. The buses will enter off of B into the bus lane at the junior at the middle school, excuse me. We'll have a flagger at the intersection of A Street, Nat Washington Way. Pickup and drop off for the middle school will need to go all the way down Basin Street to the overpass for Highway seventeen. Heading would be east to Moses Lake to the roundabout, turning left, heading north on the A Street. And then circling by the fire station through Splash, similar to what they did during the middle school construction time. And then they'll also have to turn left and come back out that direction. So we're going to try to keep everybody off of that intersection of A Street and Nat Washington Way. Again, it's going to be for about a ninety minute period twice a day, just during the that typical pickup and drop off point. Should tell your friends.
Just to point out that this is a culmination of a huge collaboration between the school district, the city, the county. The state, the P U D, everybody that was involved with it. We've had several meetings and to look at this as Ray has it. Shown tonight isn't even close to what it looked like the other day. With the hen scratchings that were there. It was, but it was, it was, it was really interesting to watch. The mindsets of everybody that was involved with that to come around and work with each other to to put that together. The. The basic hope, the most positive hope on this is that it that it's only only going to be in effect for a couple of days. May maybe a little bit more because we're being told that the work being done on the roundabout is ahead of schedule. So we're. We're really optimistic about that. So anyway, just a just a tip of the hat to everybody that was involved with that because that was a. There wasn't much left on this screen when these guys were done marking away on it. So anyway, kudos to everybody that was involved with that. Great. Anything else? Alright, anything else? Alright, thank you. Needing a jerk.